Yeah, there he is.
Ryan, I think maybe you must be in a position to keep us updated on the score.
Yep.
Maybe you could just hold up a piece of paper every once in a while.
Okay, they're up by eight right now.
Yeah, halftime, right?
Yeah.
There's Antler, he's with us. Councilman Severing. It's good to see your antlers again.
I was gonna move, I was gonna move my little desk somewhere else and I didn't.
Okay, important thing is you're with us.
You want to see the bear that's behind me?
Oh, wow. Nice.
So you can have, you can have elk antlers or you can have a bear.
We'll just go with you.
Okay, why the elk's better looking? Oh, you guys are supposed to at least say, oh no, I disagree.
Fishing for a compliment there, okay.
Shaking my head, shaking my head. John, do you know, is Cheryl gonna be a little bit late tonight or?
She has not said anything, but I do know she has been pretty slammed at work this, this last couple of months, so.
Let's see if I can just get an update with Cheryl and then we'll get started.
Charlotte, can you hear me?
Yes, loud and clear, sorry, I was.
How the knee is doing?
Cheryl says she's trying to get in.
Knee's okay, Charlotte, you're doing better?
Oh, it's, I've just, I was under the impression that my, my healing would be more linear, you know, it would be like, great, but no, it is not. It is kind of like this, but it's gonna be good, it'll, it's coming along. Ryan's the one that amazed me.
Undulation.
Ryan, can you hear us?
Yep.
You doing okay too, pal?
Yeah, doing okay, I'm good.
Well, last time I talked to you, the, the, what was it, the, your painkiller had just kicked in on your heel surgery, so.
Alright, I'm cutting out all my painkillers, so I'm getting on the positive side.
Good, good.
Hey, John, did you hear, I just talked to Cheryl, she's trying to get in, she said, is she, is she in yet?
Um, oh, I, I bet she jumped on the, um, the other one.
The September first one?
Yeah.
Oh, I did that first too.
I did as well.
I'm gonna shoot her, it, sorry, it was confusing, we were just trying to set up the other stuff and that was headed out of town, so we wanted to get it taken care of before she left.
I'll tell her you're sending her a new one.
Okay. Okay, it should be on its way.
Yeah, same, uh, she got the September first one also.
There we go.
We got her?
Yep, I'm on.
Alright, thanks. Ready to get started, John?
Yep.
Welcome, council. Thanks for joining us tonight, hopefully we have some members of the public with us also. Always good to see your smiling faces. We'll go ahead and get started tonight, Councilman Severing will either give us a thought or a invocation and lead us in the pledge of allegiance, so Blake, Councilman Severing?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna say the prayer.
Alright.
Heavenly Father, as we come before thee, we express our deepest gratitude for our abundant blessings and particularly for the opportunity to live where we live. We're grateful for incredible citizens that we get to work with and for an awesome staff that we work with at the city and we pray that deliberations today, tonight would be appropriate to thy will and for the citizens that they might be benefited by these decisions as well. We pray for that wisdom and for that guidance as we, as we do make decisions and we are mindful of many in our city who might struggle with their health and pray for thy continued blessings upon them as well as for Councilwoman Extrem and Councilman Barker that they might, they and their families will also have blessings attend them in their recuperation. We love thee and are grateful for our many blessings and we pray for this today in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Blake could also lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I certainly will. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice.
Thank you, Councilman Severing, appreciate that. We'll now move into our agenda, start with our consent agenda. Is there any comments on the meeting minutes? If not, we'd be looking for a motion to approve the June 23, 2020 city council meeting minutes. We have a motion?
Mayor, I move that we approve the June 23, 2020 city council meeting minutes.
Thank you, Councilwoman Extrem, do we have a second?
Second.
Yeah, we have a second by Councilwoman Stoker, is there any further discussion on the minutes? If not, we'll look for a vote, a voice vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll move into item number two, which is our active agenda and we'll seek comments from the public. John, if you would watch for that and just as a reminder, if you would like to comment, you can raise your hand, you can use chat and John will communicate that to us. Just a reminder, we would ask that you state your full name and your address and you can keep your comments to five minutes maximum, we'd appreciate it. John, I see we have a chat. John, are you with us?
You want me to unmute myself, I see. So Susan Clemens wrote, how long do you anticipate virtual meetings will continue? I enjoy being in my comfortable chair at home, but just wondering.
My understanding is, is in with discussion with our city recorder today, the governor has extended the emergency order through September 3rd, which allows for virtual meetings. Thereafter, if he does not extend that, we will have to have an anchor spot for our meeting. We discussed this morning, maybe holding those meetings in the senior citizen center, so the council could adequately social distance and the public could attend, but it'll all be dependent, I think, on what the governor does, so hopefully that will answer your question.
And then we have a comment from Kim that says, will comment be allowed on item four when it's discussed or now?
Um, we could probably take those comments now, if they'd like to take them, that would help us there.
Okay, and then one more written comment from Stephanie Casey, I would like to know what the full-time's events coordinator is doing, who books the bands for Monday night concerts and how much we pay them?
Okay, Councilwoman Extrem might be able to answer a portion of that if she gives her report on Parks and Recreation, if not, we will find out those answers for you. So is there someone who would like to make a public comment regarding item number four on our agenda at this time?
So, I, Kim asked how to make the comment, what I can do is, we, we just need Kim to type in her last name and then we can do the allow to talk button and allow her to comment or she could put it, oh, it's, it's a, it's Kim Extrem, sorry, wrong. I made an assumption, so we can allow them to talk, so they just need to unmute themselves.
So am I unmuted now?
Yes.
Okay, so I've actually kind of prepared a little written statement to keep my thoughts together if whoever's taking the minutes.
Kim, could you state your address for us too?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, Kim Extrem, 955 Deer Meadows Drive.
Thank you.
So I've, I've got, I've got my comments written out of whoever's taking the minutes wants them after I can send them to them, so. So since the last city council meeting, I've been troubled by the direction the city council is headed with on the property to be discussed on agenda item four, the agreement with Rod Barker regarding the use of city property. To summarize my understanding, Rod asked his friend and neighbor Mayor Harrop if he could have a garden on city property adjacent to his home, it was told, we would be delighted. Since then, Rod and Melanie have used this two tenths of an acre property for a personal garden and an extension to their yard. The city is now considering options to allow the Barker's continued use of the property. Beyond Mayor Harrop, I'm not sure who else in the city was aware of or approved this use originally. If this request was made to Mayor Berube today, I think, or at least hope, he would not feel he had the authority to approve it. I've lived in the Barker Parker neighborhood since before Rod and Melanie's home was built. I've been in Rod and Melanie's yard several times for neighborhood parties, a couple of times over the past decade, I've been gifted produce from Rod's beautiful garden. I was shocked to learn that this garden and yard extension is on city property. This is not a small annual garden, not just a few tomato plants and some corn. In addition to a large garden, underground irrigation was installed, sod was laid, fruit trees were planted and a fire pit was built. Let's call it what it is, a private park on public property. I do not want to imply that the Barker's have quote, "taken advantage of the city," I don't believe that kind of ill intent existed, but we should acknowledge that Rod and Melanie have had an advantage for many years that other residents were not afforded. In addition to the suggestion by Rod in the last city council meeting that he should have logged the work and materials that went into improving the property, he should have also logged the volume of produce created and who got how much, who enjoyed the use of the fire pit and extended yard, et cetera. While friends and close neighbors received incidental benefit, I believe Rod and Melanie's family got the lion's share. I have no issue with those doing the work, getting the reward. I do have an issue that this was done on city property in a manner that was not then and it's not now available to any other resident. I believe the agreement the city council is discussing puts the cart before the horse. It's not clear to me that the city has really explored the implications of this agreement. I have a number of questions and observations. Does it make sense to formalize a past decision that was not properly reviewed and approved in the past without a complete and careful review? The city has already had issues, a lawsuit and community strife by entering an agreement with the Barker family with special provisions and future conditions. The city should not enter into any agreement that is not a straightforward, arms-length, market-based financial transaction. You should not kick this can down the road. Has the state done a market assessment of the property value? If the city shows Rod and Melanie, allows Rod and Melanie to use the property for free during their lifetimes, what's being given away, including the value the city would forego by selling the property and collecting property tax? What's the city's liability if something happens on the property that the city still owns? What's the short, medium and long-term impact of future land use in the city without this property? What future plans are impacted and what future flexibility do we give away? Will the city make the same offer to the property owners just north on the same hollow? If not, how would the city justify its denial of such a request? Does the city have a precedent for other residents to set up gardens, plant fruit trees, build fire pits, erect storage sheds, assemble trampolines, et cetera, et cetera, on unused city property adjacent to their property? How does the city offer these, offer residents whose property doesn't board, border vacant city property a similar benefit? I think before any decision is made about this property, more detailed discovery and analysis needed on at least a couple of aspects. Is the property truly surplus and should the city dispose of it? I'm not clear on the impacts of parks planning and development if the city lets this property go. A quick map review shows that we may limit our ability to build trails connecting with Oaklawn Park or to facilitate access to Barker Park from new development. If the city sells the property, what's the market value? I'm not a real estate expert, but it seems that once the property is attached to an existing lot, it would have current market value, since the combined property could be immediately sold in that value received. For example, if one-third acre lots in less desirable area of the city are currently selling for 160,000, this implies a per acre value of at least 480,000. If the property in our discussion is two tenths of an acre, this implies a market value of nearly 100,000. I'm sure a real estate expert could provide a more sophisticated analysis, but this, but simple back of the envelope math suggests that the property is quite valuable. I believe the city council should oppose any agreement that allows free use of nearly $100,000 in city property, especially in agreement that does an indeterminate length. Depending on how it is drafted, it may make sense for a year-to-year agreement if there is some reasonable payment to the city for the use of the property and the city has the annual right to cancel the agreement at a date prior to the start of the garden season. I understand the Barker's desire to protect their investment in this property. I also understand the desire of close neighbors and friends who support allowing the Barker's to continue using the property. Had the Barker's just gardened on the property, their long-term investment would have been near to zero. The property was not actually theirs to invest in, they have already gotten significant value for the investment they made and the value of whatever infrastructure is there should not be a factor in the city's decision. Depending on future use, there may be a cost to remove what has been placed on the property. Your responsibility as a city council is to protect city assets for all North Ogden residents and consider the cost to all residents for benevolence to one family. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Do we have any other comments from the public, John?
Um, just from Minette saying she would like to have that emailed to her.
Okay. Let's see what I've got in chat there. That's it, okay. Any other comments?
Not at this time.
Alright, then let's move on to item number three, which is a discussion or action to consider an agreement for the sale of a portion of the Public Works property located on Pleasant View Drive. John Call will be our presenter, John?
Okay, thank you, Mayor, so let me, um, let me pull up this map. So, alright, switching back and forth between screens. We have received a request from the owners over in this area of the Coldwater Animal Hospital to have the, um, to have the city sell this portion of the, of the, the old Public Works facility in red to them, so they can extend their parking lot and provide some circulation between the northern parking lot and the southern parking lot. A couple of years ago, the city council looked at selling or giving away another portion of this property just to the west of this red where the cell tower is, and we, we did a public hearing at that time. At that time, the council declared it as surplus, but they only declared the tower as surplus. So that's why we're having another public hearing to decide if the council would like to declare this portion in red as surplus. Because in order to enter into any agreement for the sale of that property, we would need to declare that as surplus. In previous meetings, I had stated that we had already held that public hearing, but as I was going back and doing the due diligence, I realized that there might be some confusion about whether the, the whole property was declared as surplus or just the tower. So we thought we ought to play it safe and hold a new public hearing. There is an agreement here in the packet as well. The, the important bullet points of the agreement are that the, it's for 19,000, $19,500 for point two acres or point one-two acres. That there would be a cross-access easement between the two parties, so that in the future, if we redid the, the facility over there or sold it to somebody else for them to redo, that they would be able to utilize a joint access between the two parking lots, so there wasn't any confusion about the right of people to utilize that property. And the, and so that, that's the, that's the, that's the basic terms of the agreement, there is a cross-access easement that we have shared with the Coldwater folks, it's based on a cross-access agreement that the city of Phoenix uses for businesses. And that's the, that's the nuances as far as what the city's obligating to. The, the buyer has agreed that they would be covering all the survey, survey and boundary adjustment costs. So those could be three to $5,000 potentially. And those are the details of the agreement, what, what questions does the council have for me? Or we can move right into the public hearing and then have the questions after.
Council, any questions? John, I, I do have a question. There seems to be rising discussion about the potential closure of Pleasant View Drive coming on to 400 East Washington Boulevard and maybe expanding that into a commercial area or park, do you see that interfering with that?
So, in some ways, no, in other ways, yes, and sorry, that sounds like an attorney answer, so let me explain. One of the benefits of this as proposed is that, I zoomed in quite a bit on it, but it would allow for some, for some traffic flow from the, the, the upper parking lot, which is up here, down to the lower parking lot. So there's, there's less of a need for this access point. But there are some nuances in Utah state code that talk about when you eliminate a, a road or when you abandon a right-of-way, what exactly implication that has for the neighbors? And in some ways, or a real, I don't want to say a safe interpretation, but a a very conservative from a legal standpoint interpretation would be that this road would be divided in half. The northern half would go to the northern property owners and then the southern half would go to the city based on the transportation code. So there would, they would still have an ability to use this as an access point. The city does have the opportunity at this time to, as part of this property exchange, discuss with the Coldwater Animal folks the idea of relocating the access point to either the new property where the, the property we're selling or to possibly relocate it out to Washington Boulevard to, to make the whole project not utilize that Pleasant View Drive, if, does that answer your question, Mayor?
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're not giving up any options if that road is determined to be closed and extend it out, so. If I understood right, before we make a decision, we should probably get an understanding of how to deal with that right-of-way. I guess my other concern is based upon Mr. Extrem's comments, we have a piece of commercial property here versus a piece of residential property that's primarily unusable. And if I heard Mr. Extrem right, he feels the, the value of that is $400,000 an acre. That's in a piece of residential property. This is a piece of commercial property. So I guess one would have to question the $19,500 value if we are going to apply the same principle, although I believe the, the amount Mr. Extrem quoted is probably for an improved lot, which I don't think Mr. Barker's property is an improved lot as such, but are we exposing ourselves from citizens with not getting an appraisal of that property?
Um, there, there are some state statutes that say that the city needs to get fair value. How you determine that is not clarified. So if the council would like, we could get some estimates, that the hard part about doing an appraisal of commercial property is that it, it sometimes costs about $3,000, so you'd, you'd now be spending some money for a piece of property that, that isn't worth a significant amount more. And so we do have the option of just getting an opinion from, you know, a, a commercial broker or another real estate agent who could provide us some comps to, to justify the cost.
Well, it would seem that as a minimum, we should deal with this right-of-way situation, but I'd open that up to the council for discussion.
I have a question about that.
Hey, Councilwoman Extrem, go ahead.
So, John, if, if the property then is divided, you know, on, on the road is divided in half, so then Coldwater Animal Hospital has half of what is now Pleasant View Drive, would they be able to still utilize that as an exit? So it would just be like a driveway coming out there where people could still exit onto 400 East? Is that kind of the, the line of thinking or? I guess I'm trying to figure out how that's gonna work? Or if they would have to come down here and then exit out, you know, go all the way through the parking lot to exit out the north end?
And, and part of the confusion is caused by the state code, so the, in theory, assuming that it was a very simple transaction where the city abandoned the road and half went to the north and half went to the south, then they would be able to utilize this as the driveway to get back out to the property. In fact, that's the purpose of the statute, is to make sure that no one gets landlocked by the abandonment of a road. In, in this particular case, and I'm, I'm not aware of a situation where a city abandoned the road in favor of a park and what that means or what implications that causes, meaning that the city wasn't intending to abandon ownership of the property, they were just changing the use of the property. We actually have some places in the city where that has happened, but it's been so long ago that it was before the current transportation statutes were in place. And so I'll, I need to do some digging to find out how the, if there's a nuance, if the city intends to retain ownership of the right-of-way but not use it for a road purpose any longer, if that makes sense.
But either way, whether we sell this property or not, you're saying that, that statute may have some bearing on what we can do there.
Yes, it can affect the, the ability to, to shut the road and, and turn that area into park.
Well, I would say then maybe before we sell this, and I'm, I'm sure they open to council comments, you know, we get that resolved because you know, if we're gonna sell that property, we need to make sure we have all options open going forward. And I don't know if the property owner would be willing to, in consideration for the sale of the property, address that issue. Address that issue. Open for council discussion.
Yeah, I think it it's kind of it is confusing if if it's left it all open. We're gonna have people turning down there that. Have always turned on the Pleasant View Drive and wonder why it's blocked off further down. So. That might be a mess.
Well, the one of the reasons we would close it too is to get access to extending out that either for further commercial use or park. Councilman Swanson, do you have a comment?
I do. I think we ought to table this until John can get some greater detail. On what the state transportation statutes would or would not allow, and also talk to the animal hospital folks. About whether they are interested in connecting the upper and the lower lots that there is flow through. And entrance and exit on the north side, or if they would be wanting to keep that southern part. I think we need to have those answers before we make a decision.
Are you making that in the form of a motion, Councilman?
I'd be happy to, Mayor. I move that we table this topic until. John can research more fully the state statutes on transportation and. Sit down and discuss with the property owner. Whether he would tie the upper and lower, the north and the south parking lots together, or want to continue the ingress egress. On the south side out to Washington Boulevard.
And I would like us to see too if we can't make sure we we have the rights to that property. For further use if we decide to close the road, so.
Mayor, I'd like to amend my motion before there's even a second.
Okay, go ahead, Councilman.
I'd like to amend it also so that we not necessarily a full on appraisal done, but a. John, you referred to it as something else, just a. Yeah, a broker's opinion of what the value of that property is.
So that we can. Have a motion on the table by Councilman Swanson. Do we have a second? We have a second by Councilwoman Exstrom. Is there any further discussion, mother council members? If not, all in favor of tabling? Item number three on our agenda, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you for that discussion. Let's move on to item number four.
So so Mayor, one, it might be good to just check with the public. It lists this as a public hearing, and so it might be helpful to know if anyone had planned to make comments on it.
Even with the table motion?
Typically with the public hearing, you're you're allowing them to speak to whether or not to sell the property. I think it helps their it might help their comments to know that we're not making a decision tonight.
So we never, we did not move into a public hearing, John. So are you saying we should do that to receive comments from the public?
Yes, I think they satisfy the statute.
Okay.
Mayor, I'll move that we open the public hearing.
Thank you, Councilman Swanson. Do we have a second?
I second that.
Have a motion and a second to open the public hearing. Any further discussion? Any objections? If not, we'll move into public hearing. John, if you'd let us know if we have any comments.
Okay. No raised hands at this point.
Okay, we'll wait for a few moments. If we don't have any. Public comments, we'll be looking for a motion. To close the public hearing, but let's see if we have any comments. Okay, John, anything?
No.
Okay, seeing no comments from the public, I'd be looking for a motion to close the public hearing.
Mayor.
Councilwoman Stoker?
Make the motion to close the public public hearing.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Stoker. Do we have a second?
I second that.
Second by Councilman Severing. Any further discussion on closing the public hearing? All right, then. We will ask for a voice voice vote. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, John, now to move on to item number four.
Yes.
We'll now move on to item number four, which is a discussion and our action to consider an agreement. With Rod Melanie Barker for the purpose of using city property. Our presenter will be our city manager and attorney, John Call. John?
Thank you, Mayor. So. Oh, sorry, I opened the wrong one. So this, the council is familiar with this, but I will give an overview for those members of the public who. Are have not participated before. This is a discussion about entering into an agreement to allow for the use by Rod and Melanie Barker to. Continue their family garden on this property. As was mentioned earlier, they've been doing so since the. Early to mid two thousands. With the permission of, I believe, Mayor Harrop. And so this, in previous discussions, the council had talked about the idea of. Instead of selling the property outright, allowing for this use agreement to be maintained. Until the the Barkers no longer live in the home, and that is what has been brought back to the council as an option. The council has the option to accept the agreement, propose changes or to not accept the agreement. And so would be looking for the council to give the staff some direction on on which way to go. I I don't see. Any members of the Barker family on the list of attendees. So I'm not sure they could answer any questions, but be happy to answer any that the staff can. Any any questions, counsel?
You know, let's maybe, well, it looks like Councilwoman Extrem has some comments. Councilwoman Extrem?
I do. I had a lot of a lot of questions about how we got here. You know, I it's it's a very unusual situation that we're dealing with with this. And I I think Rod and Melanie are are the only ones that can really answer it unless there's another member of the Barker family that could. You know, I I for one, if they really were interested in that property, why wasn't it just included? When they had their lot picked out, I think. But I don't I don't really understand how the original agreement was put and how. Members of the Barker family, I think there are just three in this neighborhood that got lots. And I don't know how those lot sizes were determined. There's just a lot of lot of questions that I have. And then, you know, what was the purpose? I think the city owns property on either side of of the hollow property that goes there. So I I don't know. There's there's just a lot of things I don't know and. Because of that, I I really would like to have a lot of more questions answered. I'm definitely in favor of their, you know, not just allowing them to use it for free. Nobody else gets to do that, but I don't know. We're they they. It's kind of a mess. So that's kind of where I'm I'm situated on it. There's no time amount that they were given. It was a verbal agreement. There seems to be just a lot of. Kind of understanding that was never really formalized that, you know, ends up causing problems later. And that's that's the thing that I concerns me the most about it. Just again, because we want to be fair and impartial to all residents of this. Of the city, this, you know, the the residents of the city pay taxes in order to buy that property. And so we've got to have some sort of stewardship over it that protects it for everybody and not just for, you know, particular parties. So. Yeah, I'd probably look into getting a few more questions answered before we make any decision on that.
So what other question, Councilwoman Exstrom, do you have than how the agreement originated, how the situation originated?
Well, maybe you know, maybe you've had a conversation with the mayor and I can I can just ask you. I was really just kind of wondering what. What circumstances did they actually acquire the property? Was the property sold to the city then? Members of the Barker family that wanted lots actually bought that back? Did they buy him actually from their family themselves? Is that Ryan's nodding his head? So he probably knows. More about this situation. So they purchased it back from the city just so as as original members of. Okay, that that answers that question. And so do we know why they they weren't able to actually get? That a bigger lot that they obviously wanted? Did they just have to take the ones that were plotted out to begin with? You know, I think their lot is the same size as pretty much all of the other lots in in here. Were they not ever given the option to buy that to at the beginning? So I'm just I'm kind of wondering why, you know, why now? You know, why why is it they're trying to get the property and purchase it now? Were they not given an opportunity to begin with? Because right now, as as my husband pointed out, the property values in in North Ogden and just a lot of places are really, really high. So it's not the best time to to actually be buying it if we're gonna go with the market market price. So I'm just kind of wondering what that was. And and again, when they had this verbal agreement. Was it clear that 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 they wanted to put kind of permanent fixtures on it? I mean, they've got like an in-ground. Fire pit and fruit trees and sprinklers and things like that, that generally wouldn't invest in someone else's property. Although their neighbors did. Actually, Rod and Melanie's whole lot was covered with grass and and sprinklers because. The Akins who lived next door at the time didn't want to live next door to a weedy lot. So. Anyway, I I kind of fired all of those questions out at you at once. Does do you have any more of those answers?
Well, I think I don't, other than my understanding is. That all the previous mayors have known about this and basically consented by doing nothing. So Mayor Chubb knew about it. Mayor Taylor knew about it. Mayor Harrop, Mayor Harris. Apparently, all the mayor, this is not a a new issue. I think the reason it's coming up now is because it's probably time to address the issue. I think it was brought up. By the Barkers wanting to say. You know, we we just don't know the status of this, and we we'd really like to get a a resolve to it. So I believe it was brought up by the Barkers. I would turn to. Our our city manager and attorney, John Call, to see what he knows about the original question you had. When the the property was purchased, and then maybe some input from Councilman Barker. Who may give us some insight. I surely want everyone's questions to be. Address. So, John, can we start with you? Do you have any answer to Councilwoman Exstrom's comments?
Sure, I can answer what I can. I if I remember correctly from the agreement. That is part of the the purchase and sale agreement for the 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 entire forty some odd acres. Part of the agreement was to allow for. Family members to purchase the the lots back at the cost to develop. So including all the roads and improvements and pipes plus the land value. And I think it was up to two lots per family. So Ryan Fern's kids could buy two, and then Carl and Lorna's could buy two. That's my understanding of that portion of the agreement. Is that is that what you were looking for, Councilwoman Exstrom?
Yes, yeah, I wasn't sure, because I know there are nine members of that family and only two of them live in the neighborhood. So I was just wondering. Purchase was negotiated.
John, do you know how this little property kind of, it's very crazy piece of property where it's located and. Right off the ravine. You know, why? Do you know why that wasn't originally included in the lot to Councilwoman Exstrom's question?
I think, and I'm I'm speculating partially on conversations with people involved at the time. The intent was to have the lots meet the minimum size that was part of the agreement, which was the half acre. And then save all the rest of the property as undeveloped or future park property. And so I think I my that's my guess is that was the intent was to, because that lot to the south of the bridge. What hit the half acre mark, that's why it wasn't included. But that's that is a somewhat of a a conclusion based on information I have, which may or may not be. A hundred percent accurate.
John, is there any evidence that there was intention to use that as a future park? It seems really. An odd piece of property to use as a park. It would seem like the half acre. Minimum might have been what happened there, because that is a really strange piece of property to be used. It's it's almost somewhat unusual unusable, not completely, but off the ravine. But. Ryan, do you have anything to add that can help with your questions?
All I know is that when the Barker family sold the city, is actually the developer, and they developed and. Drew out the plots. And then my uncle is the one that picked that. He wanted that specific lot because it was next to the ravine. He did not have any say over how the size, and if you look at it, it is literally, so it's an RE twenty zone, that plot or that lot is literally twenty thousand, like. Two square feet. It was the bare minimum and nothing bigger. I don't know why it didn't get bigger. My, just talking with my uncle, he's up there. And he's gone to the city year for years before he planted a garden or trees, asking the city to maintain the. The park, to dig the weeds, to maintain, do what they're supposed to, and they never did. And said, if you want it maintained, you do it yourself. That's what he's had. Every time he's gone to the city and asked either the mayor or any of the the old city administrators, if you want to. Maintain the park, you do it yourself. The city has no money to do it. So that's why he started maintaining the park, because nobody in the city wanted to do it. He had permission from, like you said, from every mayor, from Mayor Harris, Harrop, Chug, Taylor, all of them said, keep. Oh, yeah, Yerbrooke, all of them said, keep utilizing it for what you need. The city has no interest in that. So it's not like he's trying to take advantage of the city. He's doing it. They go to the city yearly, trying to get help, and they never got any help. And now that. They want to actually try to, like you said, and like Kim Exstrom said, if he owns the land. Why or if he's utilizing it, why not pay for it? He's tried to buy it, and we keep pushing him off and saying, we don't want to sell it. Keep utilizing it for his own needs, but we don't want to sell it. So this is where we're at today is now we've got this agreement saying, yes, you can utilize it because we're not gonna sell it. He wants to buy it. If we sold it to him, it would be part of his property. He'd be paying the sale price. He'd be paying taxes on it. But the city council has said, no, we're not selling it. And that's our city council right now. So that's why we're at this agreement now that says, let's let him utilize it because. Get something formal and writing down.
Thank you, Councilman Barker. I believe probably, and once again, I haven't been around to to verify all those facts, but I I can verify that. I don't believe that building a park there in the near future would be a priority for the city. With the condition where I am in parks. With our impact fees and the commitment to other parks we have. So I don't see that. At least in my limited vision. That being developed in the near future. But I'd like to hear from Councilman Swanson. I think Councilman Swanson is the one that maybe. Suggested that we consider this type of agreement. To try to finally bring this issue to a head. But being able to maintain it in the event the city sometime down the road want the property. So Councilman Swanson, can you give us some input on this and maybe? Answer some of Councilwoman Exstrom's other questions?
Sure. It is a mess. It. You know, it harkens back to a day when things were done a little bit. More, oh, I don't know, old west ways, I guess, you know, a handshake and a. And a word, and unfortunately, in the days that we live in now, that just. We can't have that as a city when we have all of the residents to answer to. I I want to first say the Barkers have done a great job of of taking care of that piece of land. It's beautiful and the garden is wonderful. And I I wouldn't consider the trees to be a permanent. I could take John's backhoe and have those trees out roots and all in about fifteen minutes. And so I wouldn't consider those, the sprinkler lines in the ground. Now you cap off the source and you can you can go right through them. They're easily removed. The fire pit, maybe a little more, but again, a backhoe that's out and filled pretty quickly. What I'm looking for here is somewhere, some way for us to have a balance, recognize. recognizing um, the, the word or honoring the word of past administrations, and also recognizing the the fiduciary duty that we have to the residents to protect our parks and potential parklands, and satisfy both at the same time. And that's why I suggested this uh, middle ground. It it's by no means perfect for the barkers. It's by no means perfect uh, for Kim and others with similar feelings in the city. But I think it is a good compromise in between. Um, tha- that's basically why I made the um, the suggestion that I did is Rod and Melanie have invested time and heart. I don't think it's been a whole lot of money necessarily, but a lot of time and and heart and taking care of that. And I respect that, uh, they're, they're good stewards of the land, and um, they were operating on a good faith, the word of past administrations, and I think we can honor that. Um, overall, just as I read through this this week and then the notes that I took, um, the the very basic, simple agreement that I would like, i- if if I had a magic wand and I could wave it and and the, it it happened the way I I see it, is I'd like to allow Rod and Melanie to continue to use it until both are out of the home. Um, as long as one of them is there, they can continue to use it. Or such time that the city has the finances, as mayor, you mentioned, that's gonna be a while, uh, to develop that into a park or into the trail, or we have a benefactor that uh, Blake, in his fundraising efforts, is able to roust out of the bushes somewhere. Um, that with a ninety-day notice, we could come in and and I wrote down ninety-day notice or first frost. So if, you know, if we're in the middle of May and crops are going, uh, you know, we could go to first frost, let the harvest happen, and then we could, we could take it back over. And then the uh, the last piece would be a a pole and hogwire fence installed along the property line, so that it's clearly delineated to all where the private property is, where the city property is, and where the um, the allowed use by the barkers is is being granted for the length of time that Rod and or Melanie are there. That give you what you wanted, Mayor?
Thank you, Councilman Swanson, for those comments. Um, I'm one that believes that uh, the city's word is as good as its document. And I think we learn lessons uh, from the past going forward, that we better be careful what we do uh, going forward and document. I know there's been many discussions that I've heard that this was said and that was said uh, regarding this whole piece of property. And so I think we learned that going forward, um, we document things, and I believe that this is probably the only thing I'm aware of where previous mayors uh, have almost given consensus, because nothing was done. But I do believe it is time to finalize things and feel, I actually like the idea that if the city had a specific plan for that park, it was designed and laid out, and uh, we would give them adequate notice. Uh, it's kind of hard to say the first frost, maybe, you know, some of those squash survive things long term. Maybe we could give them a a six-month notice of intent. Um, just, just my thoughts. Let me open that up for uh, discussion from other council members. Uh, Councilwoman Stoker or Councilman Severing, uh, do you have comments you'd like to add to the discussion at this point in time?
Mayor, go ahead, Blake.
No, please, nature up.
Um, I like the, what Phil has said too, and I like the um, that we're not selling it or giving that piece of ground and that, you know, down the future, we, nobody knows what the future will bring. And so if the city still has ownership of that, and like Phil said, if if a trail goes through there to to hook on to the, to another part of the park that's available in the future, then um, I think that's, and I do think we should, you know, the barkers have tried all this time, and nothing, they've just kind of been pushed off. So I have no problem entering in an agreement that they can use it as long as Rod and Melanie are still, still there.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman Stoker. Uh, Councilman Severing, would you like to make some comments?
Yeah, I yeah, totally agree with uh, Councilman Barker. I think Rod has made, uh, Rod's made, Rod Melanie have made an incredible uh, commitment to 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 try to buy the ground. They've talked to all of the mayors. I think at this point, we would, we would do well to be able to enter into some kind of an agreement. I, I, I do worry a little bit. I hadn't thought about the liability issues that perhaps could arise, but maybe some kind of a hold harmless in agreement or something like that could be, could be uh, uh, arrived at. But uh, I'm supportive of, of this agreement with Rod and, with Rod and Melanie.
Okay, uh, thank you, Councilman Severing. Councilman Barker, your comments?
Yeah, we, I keep hearing the talk, if a trail's coming, a trail is coming. It's in this next, within the next year, there will be a trail that links Barker Park to Oaklawn, and it's cutting right through the middle of what we're talking about. So the Barker family knows that the trail's coming, and they have no problem with it. They are gonna bu- or maintain the park on both sides of that trail better than the city's maintaining the north side of the hollow. So we are, they're not trying to cut access. The, the trail's going right through their property, and they know it's coming.
So uh, uh, thanks, Councilman Barker. Uh, John, does the agreement address that to make sure that the barkers acknowledge that? So we don't have any concerns when that happens?
Um, right now, the agreement uh, doesn't talk about the trail, and it also doesn't uh, it it doesn't uh, follow the line of uh, or the approach that uh, Councilman Swanson mentioned about uh, the ninety-day notice of first frost. Um,
Well, once again, I think these are good comments that uh, ought to at least be considered. I guess maybe we, we should solidify, and I don't know exactly how to do this, that the council is voting to enter into the agreement. Uh, first of all, because there's no use of amending the agreement and doing things if the council is not in favor of, of this approach. If they are in favor of this approach, I think uh, all the comments that have been made are, have a lot of merit uh, to them, and uh, would be uh, amended, the agreement would be amended to includes, include those, the fence, the notification, the trail. Um, once again, we kind of got ourselves in this situation, because we thought everybody knew, right? So we're saying, we know a trail's coming through there. I want to make sure that that's documented, um, so we don't have to deal with that going forward. So John, could you regurgitate for us the amendments? But perhaps uh, um, we should take a vote to find out if the council's in favor of this. The other question would be, and it's my understanding that the, you know, maybe we should find out if the, the council is really willing to sell this. I was under the impression uh, they were not, but that could be an incorrect assumption. Um,
Mayor, perhaps, perhaps you could conduct a straw poll of all the council members on uh, perhaps each of those questions, starting off with uh, are you willing to sell the property? You know, it's nothing binding tonight, but it would be a straw poll to let us understand. Sorry, my guard dog is letting me know somebody's somewhere in the neighborhood.
Yeah, I'll see if I can find some straw, and we'll get on that, Councilman Swanson.
Okay.
That's a good idea. Let me just unofficially poll. Uh, and Councilman Barker, I don't know how you want to participate in this. You've indicated to me that you felt potential conflict, because Rod is your uncle, but I'd leave that up to you.
I don't want the perception that I'm voting just because he's my uncle, so I'm stay, I'm staying out of every vote.
Okay, we won't even ask you to straw vote.
Right, I won't add, yeah, won't answer.
Councilman Swanson, what are your feelings about uh, selling the property?
I'm not in favor of selling the property.
Okay, uh, Councilwoman Exstrom?
I'd like to hang on to it. Um, I, I think personally, as working with Tiffany and and with the Parks Department, there are lots of things that we could do with it, but I don't want, I'm really tired of having unhappy people. Um, I, I just don't want to do something that's gonna cause Rod and Melanie any more strife than they've already had. Um, again, I'm, I'm a little concerned that if we actually pursue market value of it right now, it's gonna be pretty costly for them to purchase it. Um, and then I don't, I don't know what that's gonna look like to try and put uh, any kind of park thing around it. So anyway, I, I, I'd want to look at it a little more closely with a, a plat and, and get some ideas about how we could use it, that um, I, I don't want to cut something off or, you know, cause something better. But that's, again, I, I could be convinced otherwise, but right now, I would, I'd be in favor of not selling it.
Okay, thank you. Um, Councilman Severing?
Um, you know, there's two principles that govern the value of uh, real estate, and that's location, 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 and high and highest and best, highest and best use. Now, it's, it's just my perception, having, having walked the property twice, that its location really does not lend itself to, in my opinion, future use for the city. Um, so I guess uh, I, I'm in favor of selling it.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Stoker, could you express your opinion for us, please, on this straw poll?
I am not in favor of selling it, and I do think the city can use it. So, no, I'm not in favor of it.
Okay, so that would lend me to believe that we should concentrate our efforts on uh, this uh, type of arrangement suggested by Councilman Swanson. And I think uh, the preferred method from the Barker family, when they were approached by either selling or utilizing. So with that, uh, then our concentration, in my opinion, should be on this agreement. So John, do you uh, have written down the uh, things we would like to amend the agreement with?
Um, I can, I can list the, or tell you the three things that I've kind of picked up on. Um, I think uh, one is clarifying exactly which property they're being allowed to use or which portion, and making it clear that it's the, this, the cur- area they're currently utilizing for the garden. So we'd include, I include a map that shows the area they're allowed to utilize, which would by the map uh, not include the, the trail on the north side of the hollow. So that would kind of kill or get those two birds with the one stone. Um, talk about the ninety days of first frost. And then the other uh, thing I remember hearing was a discussion about a fence. So I just think those are the things I need direction from the council on those three. Did I miss anything?
I know, um, you know, the first frost, that could be pretty early or pretty late, depending on the year. I, I'd prefer maybe a set of time of six months or nine months, that the council doesn't object to that.
Mayor, my thinking on the uh, uh, and I, I don't, I'm not bound to the ninety day, but i- if the city does have a, since it's being used for gardening purposes and vegetable and fruit production, once the year's vegetable and fruit production has ended, then we're not really interfering with anything that they worked on that current year. And that's why I was thinking, you know, ninety days or first frost, um, you know, if it were the beginning of May, and they've already got their crops in May, June, July, you know, we're nowhere near. And at that point, we would wait till, you know, November or something like that. But if it's in, say, late October, that the city suddenly has the ability, and we've got things laid out and ready to go, um, I don't see any purpose in waiting till the following May, uh, because they're not gonna do anything with the property over that winter period, period, anyway.
Nor probably with the city in the winter, generally.
Right.
Um, I just want to make sure that they have adequate notice.
Absolutely.
So I don't know what that is.
And I'd be okay with six months, you know, that's uh.
Council will give us some input. Uh, that seems to be the, the issue of discussion. I don't think the others, the fence and the map and the things of that nature.
I think six months sounds like a good period of time to give them notice. Um, I, I wouldn't be opposed to giving them more notice than that either, maybe even a year. Um, I would like a fence up just so that it's really delineated. I think also, I, I, I do understand that they have had some visitors come from the backside of the property, come explore down in there. So if we're actually allowing them to use it, we might want some sort of fence, just so people don't accidentally kind of wander into their yard. Um, yeah, I just, I want to make sure everybody knows where the boundaries are, so they're really clear.
Yeah, and I, I, as I think about Councilman Swanson's comments, I mean, we could give them six months, and that'd be the middle of June, right in the middle of the, the gardening season, so. Um, you know, the safest thing is to cover everything would probably be nine months or a year. And we would probably know that far in advance that we were going to do something with the park, wouldn't we, Councilman?
Yeah, I, I think so, but I don't think it's necessary. You know, I think in the event that uh, you know, we know we're uh, where a six months would say it's end of December, middle of January, if we give them the notice at that point, and we give notice that we're going to be beginning a project, say, in mid-June, late-June, and they choose to plant, um, then they have done that with notice that in clear back in January, that we would be uh, taking over that piece again and doing whatever it is we were going to be doing in six months' time. So they could then make the decision whether or not they wanted to plant, harvest what they could, you know, some early girl tomatoes or something like that. Um, some of the um, the leafy vegetables, carrots, things like that, that tend to come on early. Um, but I think six months is ample time, in my opinion.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Stoker, do you have anything to add there?
Nope, I think six months is good.
Okay, Councilman Severing, any objections to six months?
No objection.
So, okay. So John, where do we need to go from here? Do we need to get back to the barkers to see if uh, they have problems with those uh, members to the agreement?
Uh, y- yes, let me just make sure that uh, they're, they're not here listening uh, so that you couldn't just ask questions, but I, I don't see them on right now.
Mayor?
Yes.
Just one, just one other comment from the staff report. Um, that the barkers had brought up the possibility of one of their kids purchasing the property and wanting to continue the garden. Um, my feeling is that we have an agreement right now with Rod and Melanie. If the property ownership changes hands and it goes to one of their children, then this agreement would come to an end, and the new owner would then come to the city to negotiate an agreement, if the city wanted to do that at that time.
Councilman, let me just ask a question. I wonder if they transferred in this, this into a trust, their trust that they control?
I'd be surprised if they hadn't done that already, and for me, it's the physical living of Rod and or Melanie, uh, Melanie in the home, whether it's a trust.
So if their kids bought it and let them live in there, the agreement would still be in place. So it's not really a transfer of an ownership, it's uh, physical living in the property. I just want to make sure I understand that.
That was my intent.
Okay.
A- again, recognizing the word that was given to Rod and Melanie and the work that they've done. Um, they won't be there forever. And uh, you know, with the six-month notice, if, again, if Blake, in his masterful way of raising money, is able to come up with twenty million dollars so that we can finish Barker Park and this piece, then, Blake, I'm putting you on the spot. The uh, then we can give them the six months' notice, and we can take it back and do whatever. Blake, I'm putting you on the spot. The, uh, then we can give them the six months' notice and we can take it back and do whatever we're gonna do with it.
Once again, I, I just wanna clarify, I. I guess the thought that comes into one's mind is to make, I'm not aware of any plans we have at this point in time to develop that. Uh, piece of property in a park. Um. You know, I, I guess if I'm the Barkers, I look at that and say, well, based upon that, you can come in six months from now and say, hey, we have a plan for the park. Um. I guess that's the reality, but it just seems. I know we don't have any plans and I don't anticipate with all the other commitments we have. But that would be a top priority for a, a park at the current situation. But you know, that is the downside of this, the.
I, I'm sure John could work in language and, and do his wordsmithing. And, and such that it's clear that it, it's not just a matter of the city having a plan, but we have a plan. We have the finances in place and we're ready to move forward with construction.
See, I, I guess I was still unclear that that had been designated as park property. In the general plan or in any plan.
Well, the only, the, the document that the Barkers gave to us clearly delineates that area, the entire hollow, there's a detention basin. That's how it's labeled, the six-point something acres. That is, that was deemed as hollow is clearly marked and pointed to in that document, and this. Section, including the part that the Barkers would like to purchase, was delineated as detention basin.
So is that park?
Yeah, that whole piece. You look at the, the document that Rod Barker gave us. Um, the entire piece east of Barker Parkway there is designated detention basin. It's not park. It's not a lot, it's not part of the hollow, the six-point-nine acres or whatever it was. That was, uh, designated as the hollow that had to be preserved, that was not a piece of it. So is it a lot, I mean, and if it is detention basin, then it's a water, uh, water department resource, the stormwater. Asset, so.
So.
Who does, who does it really belong to? Is it the park? Is it stormwater?
Yeah, that's a good point, because if, uh, we've already got that issue on twenty-seven-hundred. Where people felt that that was a, a general plan asset could be used. To, uh, pay for the park down at Patriot Point. But not, it appears that that's a stormwater asset and just can't be given to the general fund, so. Maybe that's another clarification, John, we better have. So, uh, this goes down. So.
Mayor, I'm gonna propose that we table this for now. Um, I'll, I'll motion that we table this until John can, uh, we can get a, a, as near a final. Understanding of what asset, to whom does this asset belong, whether it's stormwater? Or if it's parks, or if it's neither, and it's a, just a general asset of the city. And then also get the Barkers feeling on the, the proposals that we've made tonight.
Yeah, if they're not with us, I think we, we do need to get their input along with those other two issues. Uh, John, are they not with us this evening?
Um, I, I don't see them o- on the, as an attendee.
Um, okay, well, uh, Councilman Swanson, is that a motion?
It is.
Motion made by Councilman Swanson to table this issue till we get. Uh, those amendments, uh, in the agreement and. Uh, approval or discussion with the Barkers on the amendments, and then the additional thing is to. Find out the true ownership of the ground. Do we have a second?
A second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
I got one quick question.
Did you have information for us?
No, I just have a question.
Oh, I mean, do you have information for us?
No, when we're talking about the fence, putting a. Fence across the property, are we saying we wanna fence off around the Barker's property and then put a fence around the city property so that. For him to go from his property into the garden or into the, he's gotta go through a fence? Or is the fence on the backside of the city's property? Where is the fence gonna be put? That's what I don't, are we actually gonna say we're gonna separate the two with the fence, even though there's not one now?
My understanding was that back part, uh, this agreement applies to the garden.
Yeah. The yard and the garden.
My understanding was the fence would go, uh, on that back portion, because that's not part of the agreement. We could still be used by him and maintained if he'd like, but the fence would, would go there, was my understanding. Is that incorrect?
I can, I can certainly go for that. My initial discussion was to have the fence go along the property line. Um, along east, east-west, along the line and then back and then over to the white. Fence, so that all of the city-owned land was contiguous and clearly delineated, but there would be a gate. Um, of sufficient size that Rod's machinery or anything else. He could get to his garden just as easily as he does now, just it would be a, a central location, a, a gate of some sort.
Hey, uh, Councilman Swanson, um, maybe you could help me understand the purpose of that, because obviously the city would be paying money to put the fence up.
For me, the, the purpose is, is simply to give a visible delineation that this is city property and this is privately owned property. To any kids that are wandering around back there from the new development, which is gonna, going to be happening. Um, just to make it very clear, and as was mentioned, I think by Councilwoman Extron, uh, to keep any of the kids from wandering into their yard. Uh, but that could be accomplished with just a north-south fence along that east side of the, of the line there and. And frankly, that would be fine with me.
Okay, we can clarify that, uh. Also, so we have a motion. Do we have a second? Did we get a second on that? We had a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of tabling this issue, say aye.
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 Opposed, any? Councilman Barker, do you have any information for us? Did we discuss, did we discuss earlier on a piece of paper?
Lost.
The jazz lost?
Yep.
Okay.
So now we don't need to hurry up to meeting it, it can take as long as it needs.
Okay, let's move on to item number five on our agenda, which is a discussion or action to consider a conservation easement at Barker Park. Our presenter will be, uh, John Call, our city manager and attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is, uh, this is the same property, uh, that we're talking about for this discussion. Um, as this was originally proposed, this, uh, this parcel that's, um, east of the Barker Parkway. And north of Rod and Melanie Barker's house, um, was not included in the original easement. Uh, grant when the property was transferred. From the municipal building authority to the city, or I should say the remainder of the property in the area. And so, uh, this would be, um. Intended to capture and, and include that same type of conservation easement on this parcel. Uh, which, uh, prohibits, uh, buildings and other things which are not. Uh, so it prohibits residential buildings and above-ground public facilities. Um, but it does allow for facilities related to parks. Um, you know, so a bathroom or a Bowery or things like that could be constructed on the building or on the property. And so the question is, council, whether you wanna move forward with, uh, making that sort of a declaration as well. Uh, for the conservation easement on this property. Um. Uh, it was, it was left out of the previous dedication. Uh, based on the property records, this is owned by North Ogden City, and the rest of the, the Barker Park area was owned by the. North Ogden Municipal Building Authority, which are two separate legal entities. Um, so it, it didn't get transferred at the same time.
Was that just an oversight, in your opinion, John?
Uh, yeah, it was, uh, we, we specifically transferred everything from the municipal building authority to the city and, and included the easement at that time. Um, and, and missed that piece because it was, it wasn't in the title of municipal building authority.
Okay, do you have anything else to share with us before we open this up? A discussion by the council?
Um, I, I would just probably say from the, from maybe not the staff, but from my viewpoint, I, I would recommend that we. We put this conservation easement on the property to eliminate confusion about whether it could be sold or built on in the future.
Okay. Council, any questions or discussion?
Yeah, uh, Mayor.
Yes, uh, Councilwoman Severing.
I'd like to have John address the idea of both the pros and the cons of this conservation easement. And I, I suppose, I, I hope I, I, I think I'm hearing this properly, this conservation easement would include. That property that Rod and Melanie are currently using. Right?
Yes, that, that would, it would include the, where the garden is.
Okay, so I wanna know, I wanna know and understand the pros and cons of, uh, putting this into a conservation easement.
Um, so the, the pro, and I guess from the city side, uh, would be, it would. It would set, uh, the expectation for the property moving forward. Um, and potentially eliminate the need for future discussion about what is or isn't gonna happen on that property. Um, the cons would be it, it does give away some rights to the property. Um, most likely, there's not a lot of development rights available on the property because of slope and water issues. So it's not likely to be, um, suitable for structures anyways. Um, and I think, uh, the, from a, a parks perspective. And with the trail going through on the north end of this property, that there's a, there's a benefit to leaving it. Open, and so that would be, sorry, I switched back to a positive or a, a benefit of the conservation easement. Um, there are people out there who in general don't like conservation easements, because it, you never know what's gonna happen in a hundred years. Um, but this conservation easement is granted to property owners in the area. They're the people who would be. Able to enforce the easement. Um, it specifically lists, uh, the four parcels here on the screen. So if those four property owners in the city were in agreement that the conservation easement should be released, uh, then that could happen. Um, in the future, if that was desired by all the parties involved.
So could you, I think you, could you explain for me more what you mean by. Uh, the future being kinda held, my choice of words, not yours, but kinda being held captive by a conservation easement and. Therefore, what would we see in a hundred years that would, uh, this concert eas- eas- conservation easement? What kind of problems would that cause?
It, so the, the biggest problems that a conservation easement could cause is. By prohibiting structures and other things that it, you, if there was a need to put something on this property. The conservation easement would restrict the ability of the city to, to put something here, um, that isn't park-related. Um, and so the benefit, though, is that in a hundred years, in theory, the property would look exactly as it does now. And so it's a, you're giving up some rights in favor of the right of, or the, the goal of, of tying the hands of a future council. So that they can't just outright change the plan for this property and, and. Most conservation easements are done to protect open space or agricultural land. Uh, to prevent developers and other private parties from coming in and turning everything into concrete and asphalt.
John, isn't right across the street, uh, if I understood right, a conservation easement?
Yes.
This was an over, this was an oversight, uh.
Yeah, so I'm gonna show the map. Um, this property, let's see if I can draw. Um. Somewhat good, all of this property here, oh, sorry. Is already encumbered by this same conservation easement. And what we're talking about is extending that same conservation easement onto this property. In blue, so that it matches the same conservation easement that's on the rest of the property in red.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I should have left this house out here on twenty-six-hundred.
Okay. Councilman Severing, does that answer your question?
Uh, yeah, it does. I just, uh, you know, I think John said it right. I mean, this piece of ground. That the Barkers would like to use really is. Because of the slope, because of the water content. We've waited, uh, you know, we bought that ground in what, two thousand and two, John?
Yes.
I just, I just think we could do some goodwill. I'm all about goodwill, so I'm looking at that piece of ground unless somebody puts some really serious money into that hollow. By filling it in, I just don't ever see us ever putting anything up there to use. And what a goodwill gesture to perhaps sell a, a piece of ground that really is not ever gonna be usable. So, uh, obviously, uh. I have, I have different sort of feelings on this, so I'll just, I'll just say that.
Okay. You know, I think the, uh, thing that attracted me from John's comment is open space. Uh, the natural portion of that, and I think even if a park was put in there, we tried to keep as much of that natural as we could. Um. I don't think anybody's anticipating construction, and this isn't the prop, this is a bigger piece of the property that Rod and Melanie are talking about, isn't it, John?
Yes, the, the piece that we're talking about with, with Rod and Melanie is here in yellow, and that's a, a rough shape, but.
This is a bigger piece, this is the whole hollow. Uh, any other comments from the council or question?
Yeah, Mayor, I was just gonna say, I know that that's, I know that the Barker piece is just a smaller piece. But it seems like this has not been an issue until all of a sudden, you know, the Barkers are wanting to do something good. And then all of a sudden, we get nervous about, you know, conservation easements and so forth, so I'm okay with a conservation easement. I just think it's, uh, interesting timing.
All right, thank you. Comments from other council members?
And Mayor, can I just add, I think, uh, that the request for the easement was made by the individuals who are buying the houses here. As well as the Barkers, Rod and Melanie requested that we put the conservation easement in. Um, because, as was mentioned, it was an oversight, it was left out of the rest of the, the area in red. And I don't think that was the intent of what the council did a couple of years ago, it was, so that's the reason it's back.
Yeah, it seems like, you know, one aspect, we're saying it is part of the park, but then we're saying it's not, if. I, I don't know, it's just a little confusing there, but any other comments from the council?
Mayor.
Uh, yes, Councilwoman Stoker.
Um, I, I think we should put it as a conserva- or conservation easement, because. Like you say, we, we don't have enough open space as it is, and sometimes we hear from residents that, you know, they don't want. Everything filled up with houses or condos or density or. So I'm in favor of any little open space that we can keep, that our kids have a place to go play. I mean, how many have ever had a chance to play in a hollow?
Okay, thank you.
In favor of putting it in, in as a conservation and so it doesn't. And in a hundred years, we won't be here, so what does it matter?
Nobody might be here the way things are going. Councilwoman Extron, did you wanna make a comment?
I, I did, so. If I'm understanding correctly, right now is designated as a detention basin. Are other detention basins generally in? I mean, some of the other ones, we've got one, for instance, at the end of the street here on Deer Meadows, um, is that in a conservation easement? Are other detention basins in conservation easements? Generally, we don't build things on detention basin with, with the exception of when we. Divert all of the water out, like we're doing on twenty-seven-hundred, but, um. To me, it just looks like, oh, we forgot to put that one in the conservation easement, because I, you know, even if it. We, we have other detention basins that kind of double as parks, it, it'd be kind of the same kind of thing, I think. We just don't build. Structures and buildings and, uh, anything else there, but I think it's a good idea just to keep. structures and buildings and, uh, anything else there, but I think it's a good idea just to keep that open. It doesn't lend itself to having anything built on it anyway, just because of the slope and the drainage and things like that.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Mayor.
Uh, Councilwoman Swanson.
Uh, just a, a couple of comments here. I, I agree that it ought to go into a conservation easement. Um, as far as Blake, I applaud your willingness and your desire for goodwill. Uh, I think though that the city has, has exercised goodwill in allowing the barkers to uh, do as they please pretty much with that property, uh, private residents using public property for a decade uh, without any cost from the city. You know, there's no rent, there's no, but there's nothing of that that was being done, and we're working to create an agreement that would allow them to continue that use until the city can actually do something with that land or until Rod or Melanie are not there. I'm, I, I pulled up the, um, the map that was used for that grant, um, way back when, showing that area as a detention basin. I don't know if I can share my screen and everybody can see that. John, is that possible?
It is not possible in the webinar form of.
Okay, then that, that's fine. Mayor and Council, I'll, I'll ship that off to you, but, um, I, I, I think, you know, as you look here, there's lots, one, two, three, four, there's the detention area. There's a faded but clear line on Lot Five, which is where the barkers live now, um, that on the north side of that, it is a detention basin. Um, anyway, I think we can get stuck in the weeds on this thing, but I applaud you, Blake. You're always looking for goodwill, and that's a good thing. But I'm in favor of, uh, having it as a conservation easement.
Okay, do we have a motion to that, uh? And then that, uh, motion to make it a conservation easement?
You want me to make that motion?
You're welcome to.
Mayor, I'll move that we, uh, that we designate uh, the area that we've been discussing in this item as, uh, under a conservation easement.
Thank you, Councilman Swanson. Do we have a second to his motion?
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, council? Councilman Barker, will you be voting on this?
Sure. I have no fine business in this.
Okay, any further discussion before we start our, uh, vote? We'll take a roll call vote on this. Let's start with you, Councilman Barker.
Mayor, can I just, can we just tweak one thing? Uh, what we need to.
I already voted.
Sorry, I was muted and I tried to jump in. Uh, as part of the motion, it would be helpful to, to identify that we held the public hearing on this already. And so we're just formalizing it so that we're, if there's a question about when the public, that if there's a public hearing, it's all squared away and taken care of. Sorry.
Oh, okay. Thanks for that information. Back to you, Councilman Barker.
Mayor.
Yes.
I, I need them to have this, um, conservation easement agreement number twenty-three, twenty-twenty.
Twenty-three, twenty-twenty.
All right, Mayor, I'll, uh, withdraw my previous motion and state a new motion. I, uh, moved that we adopt agreement twenty-three dash twenty-twenty. The public hearing having been, having been previously held to designate the area under discussion in this item as under conservation agreement.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second to that motion now?
I second that.
Okay, I have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? By the way, Ned, I didn't see that on here that there was a agreement number for this item.
All right. Turning a page.
Um, any further discussion? All right, now we'll go to a voice vote then. Councilman Barker, you're still on.
Still, yes.
Still, yes? No change on that?
No.
All right, Councilman Severing?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stoker?
Yes.
Councilman Swanson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Exstrom?
Yes.
Uh, that would pass unanimously. Thank you for your uh, participation in that. We'll now move on to item number six. Uh, presenter will be John Call, our city manager, and he'll be talking about a, uh, a crosswalk on two thousand north. John?
Sorry, muted and screens are in the way. Uh, so, uh, Mayor, I, uh, we've received a request and the council has talked about before. Um, th- this intersection, let me just make sure I'm showing the right screen. Uh, right at, uh, one fifty east and two thousand north. So that's this intersection right here. Uh, just for reference, Kurt's Drive-In is over here to the east and the Canary Building is over here. Um, we have done it, or the chief and his team have done the traffic study at this intersection. Um, there are not enough kids crossing here to warrant a crossing guard, and there is a further complication that the majority of the kids who are walking across this intersection are, that are going to Majestic Elementary, which is up all the way up here. Um, on twenty-five fifty north, they are, uh, out of boundary exceptions, so they are not technically in the majestic boundaries. Uh, and so the school has some rules related to that and crossing guards. Um, the chief is on and he can, he can speak for himself, but I think there is, uh, you know, safety is paramount for uh, everyone that's on the staff and the council. And so the question is, do we wanna put in some flashing crosswalk lights there? If we do, we need to, uh, have the council give a, uh, some guidance to staff to include that in a pre, in a future budget amendment as well as any direction on whether you would like us to proceed with the installation of that sooner than later. Uh, we don't anticipate a budget amendment coming back to the council before October. Um, so that, if you have any questions, um, Chief, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I can go over the survey if they would like and show some numbers.
Chief, I think it would be just good maybe for you to render your opinion uh, from a safety standpoint. We have a lot of confidence, uh, in your interpretation of that, so I would, uh, unless the council wants to hear all the details, I would say, uh, your opinion is probably more valuable. You've dealt with this for a long time and you know what's going on, so council, would that be okay if we don't get into the weeds and we have the chief just express his, his opinion?
Yes.
Now, if there's any further questions, we could, we could dive deeper. Sounds like you're on, Chief.
Okay, so uh, the number of school kids crossing here doesn't meet the criteria, um, for altering traffic. Um, but we do have school kids crossing, whether they're out of boundary or not, um, and a number of them are, um, junior high age kids, which we typically don't count uh, when we're looking at adding crossing guards. Um, they're about half in the afternoon of what typically is needed for a crossing guard, and they're quite a bit less than that in the mornings. Uh, but the, the concerning part was the number of cars that are traveling through this intersection. Um, when we did our survey, uh, we did it for two hours in the morning, two hours in the afternoon, both when school was in and out, and the number of cars was significant. We're talking three hundred cars an hour. Um, most of them probably taking their kids to school. So anybody crossing that intersection is not gonna have a significant gl- gap in traffic to, to get across the street. Um, so my recommendation, and, you know, even though it doesn't meet the needs for, uh, a crossing guard and a reduced school zone, um, would possibly be a, a flashing solar-powered pedestrian-assisted crossing light. We've done these, uh, at a number of different intersections and places in the city where, where people cross, and it, it seems to be, um, really effective for safety. And, uh, the cost for one of these lights is, um, and John can specify a little bit more, I think, is upward about five thousand dollars. Um, and we would provide some orange flags for the people crossing to carry across the street to kinda highlight their existence, but. So the, and this is, um, liber approach by a family that has some, some students that are out of battery, except, exceptions that cross this intersection on their way to Majestic, and they're very concerned about the, their kids crossing, and, and this would be my recommendation.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Council, do you have any questions? For Chief Quinney? All right, uh, I guess we would be, uh, looking for some direction, John, uh, from the council uh, to start moving forward with that. Do we need a, uh, official motion?
That would be helpful, yes.
All right, do we have a motion then to present, uh, to, uh, go ahead and put the flashing light for crossing on two thousand?
Mayor?
Councilwoman Stoker?
I would make that motion that we do go ahead and put that flashing light in as, um, specified.
Okay, knowing that we'll need a budget adjustment to do that, but, uh, okay, do we have a second?
I second that.
Second from Councilman Severing. Any further discussion?
Mayor, uh, there was a, a question of whether we wait until October when we do our next budget amendment, or if we go ahead and authorize the work to be done now, and then we'll uh, catch it up in a budget amendment in October.
Yeah, I think with schools starting, uh, this is a safety issue. Uh, my discussion with the chief is, uh, when it becomes a safety issue and he tells us one, we'll find the money somewhere.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think we do it now. Get it done, and then we'll handle the budget a minute later.
Okay. We do have a motion to go ahead and install, so would you like to extend that? Councilwoman Stoker to?
Yes, I will. I will add that in and amend it to, um, start immediate, get that in as soon as possible and not wait.
Okay, is that, uh, all right with you? Councilman Severing on the second?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Thank you for your comments on that. Councilman Swanson, do we have any other comments? All right, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. We'll move on to item number seven, John, which is a discussion on the CARES Act funding. Okay, move ahead with that.
Uh, yes, uh, so council, we, uh, we just wanted to update you on the CARES Act funding and what is coming. Um, our staff report, uh, didn't make it into the, the council packet. It also is not a very long staff report. So, um, the, the intent of this discussion is just to update the council on where we're at and find out what questions you have. Uh, Evan is here and available to answer questions as well. Um, and so what we're, what we're gonna talk, or I guess I should say what we found, um, in the CARES Act funding is there are some uses of the funds that, um, are being authorized by the Department of Treasury that might help um, in some areas of the city. Uh, the most important which are that the biggest one of those is that for CARES Act funding, we are allowed to use it for, uh, first responder uh, salaries, um, including those which were already budgeted for. So we have the opportunity to use some of that money for, uh, police. And we have already spent some money on some facility upgrades here at City Hall and other buildings uh, to provide some, uh, moisture barriers and other things, as well as to, to buy some, uh, quick cleaning equipment, to buy, uh, personal protective gear for folks. And then even to buy some audiovisual equipment and/or pay for, uh, Zoom subscription, for example. And so those are some of the things we've used money for. Um, Evan, do you have any other details that you would like to provide to the council on what we've used money for or, uh, things you've heard about other municipalities using this money for?
Hey, John, while he's getting, uh, unmuted there, um, I think also we've, uh, monitored salaries of the additional sanitation and things we've had to do uh, with the parks and the bathrooms and things of that nature, but we retained about fifty thousand plus dollars. But while I'm thinking of it, I did receive, and once again, thanks to Councilman Swanson for helping county in the allocation of this, but I saw today that, uh, thirty-six businesses in North Ogden benefited from the CARES money that was given. They received five hundred and thirty-six thousand, five hundred dollars. So when you put that into, uh, perspective and the fifty thousand that we kept, we actually benefited from, I believe, doing this with the council, uh, with the county, because we, we were at about five hundred and eighty some odd thousand. I know that was a concern of the council as we entered into this, would we get our fair share, and, uh, those are grants ranged anywhere from, uh, on the low side of two thousand with numerous of our businesses receiving thirty-five thousand dollars in grants from the CARES money. So I just wanted to add that color and, and update the council uh, on that, so. If Evan's unmuted now, we can hear from him.
Hello, Mayor and Council. So, uh, the question that John has brought up is an important question. The first round of funding the city received was about five hundred ninety-five thousand dollars. And as the mayor said, we retained ten percent of that, and we sent ninety percent to the county for the grant program for businesses. Um, after we sent that money, we received clarified, uh, information, I guess, from the U.S. Department of Treasury that the CARES funding can be used for public safety. We are about to receive our second round of funding, which is expected to be equal to the last round, so another five hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars should be coming to the city, and, um, with that amount of money, we had, s- we had been planning on, you know, sending a, a major portion of that to the county again. Uh, with this new information that we have the possibility of using it on public safety, uh, we felt like it was important for the council to weigh in and give us direction on, on what the priority should be there. Um, I will say there's some discussion or question about the, the Department of Treasury's interpretation of the rules because in the original grant guidance, we were instructed that CARES funding could not be used for expenses that had already been budgeted, um, such as public safety, which was included in our budget. Um, so this, this new direction from the treasury uh, is in conflict with the previous guidance we received. Uh, but we do feel like guidance, you know, the latest guidance from the treasury is probably the most reliable. Uh, but I just wanted to, you know, share that with you, that there's, you know, kind of an ongoing discussion about what, what is proper in using these funds.
Thank you, Evan, and once again, and I've had discussions recently with the county. They're anticipating that the cities will keep this next tranche of money and not revert, uh, any of it to the, the county. Um, they'll be amending the agreement as, as you mentioned, right now, the agreement requires us to send ninety percent to the city. I mean, to the county, excuse me. Um, in my discussions with John and Evan, this is kinda like the, uh, payroll protection loans that were granted. Uh, first of all, they came out with all these restrictions and very quickly changed that. Uh, the downside is that we give the money back. The upside is, is that we keep it and use it for public safety purposes. It seems like to me that the upside is much greater than the downside here. It seems like to me that the upside is much greater than the downside here. We would surely not expend that money until we had total clarification on the program, but that's kind of been my discussion with John and Evan, so open that up for discussion to the council, their thoughts. Councilwoman Extrem, I see you unmuted.
Yes, I did. In my discussion with Tiffany this week, she said she was able to utilize some of the CARES money to actually help their departments comply with Weaver Morgan Health Department requirements also. So there is a temporary fence around Barker Park so that we could have our Music Mondays to do social distancing, some of the things that they were able to do at North Shore. So it's, it's been helpful. So I'm, I'm grateful that we've been able to utilize those funds to, to be in compliance and to keep some normalcy and some of the activities that we've been able to do without having it be a burden on the city's budget to continue that.
Did we lose you, Councilwoman Extrem, or?
My son was just trying to call and then it comes through on my iPad, so I had to decline.
Did you have further comments?
No, no, I was just, we, we hadn't discussed that use of the funds, so I just wanted to put that in there as well.
Yeah, I know she used it for sanitation purposes and things, so. Councilwoman Swanson, do you have anything you'd like to comment on regarding this?
I think the idea of hanging on to it and using it for public safety is wonderful.
Okay. Councilman Stoker? Councilwoman Stoker?
Oh, sorry, I thought I was unmuted. I agree. We hang on to it, we have the clarification and use it for the public safety.
All right, Councilman Barker, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Nope, sounds good to me.
All right, and Councilman Severing?
I agree, let's use it for safety of the citizens.
All right, does that give you adequate direction, John and Evan?
Yes.
You need anything else from the council?
No, I would, obviously, we will come back with a, a budget amendment later to, to affect the change, but I think we have the direction we need.
And John, did you see the form we have to fill out to get the disbursement? I forwarded that to you earlier today.
I know Evan and I spoke about it, so, yes.
I, I filled out the form already, so the money should be coming soon.
Yes, and the only question I had is do we include the five hundred and thirty-six thousand, five hundred that we expended on businesses out of our previous allocation of CARES money, so that they know that we utilized it?
Well, when I read the survey, it was asking what we had used through the end of June. And that was before we had spent the, the large share of the money. So I reported on what we had used through the end of June.
Okay, maybe a footnote would be helpful. I don't want them to think we're not using the money appropriately, so.
Okay.
There's an opportunity for, all right, let's move on to item number seven in our agenda this evening. I'd like to hear from our council members just reports about their assignments in the city so that the citizens can have a a better knowledge of anything that is important to, to them and to our city. So Councilmember Stoker, would you like to give us a a report on what's going on with the public safety or Police Department?
Yes, I would like to do that. Just to reiterate from, once again, that, to remind that everybody, our residents, that burglaries or vehicle burglaries, burglaries, I can't say that word very good, that they're, they're continuing and it seems like at a high rate. And so just a reminder that to take your keys out of your cars, lock your doors, don't leave anything of value inside, especially where they can see it. And probably another good thing is shut your garage doors and lock them so that they can't see what's inside and you know, maybe case your place and break in and take stuff that way too. And also just to, to reiterate where they did a, a parade for a young, a girl in our city that was fighting cancer, they did a drive through the neighborhood and passed her home. And what a nice thing and good thing that was for the young lady that is fighting for cancer. And also an update, they're, they're, the chief is going to start doing interviews for three candidates for the opening that they, for one opening that they, that is available. And one of those who have applied is LEO certified. And the other two are only corrections certified, so if one of those two are selected, then they will have to go through the LEO block of academy which runs from October through December. And also Officer Pierce is our new resource officer and has done a lot of work in preparing for the new school year. So, and just kudos to all of the department heads and to our officers and to the chief in keeping our city safe and responding to, to calls and just being, just watching out for us and doing a good job. And also, again, to be aware of the Public Works building, that we're still working on that and the necessity of that, and especially with some of the things that are going on around. We're very fortunate that this hasn't hit our city and but there is a need for our officers and residents that are going in and out of that to be safe.
Thank you, Councilwoman Stoker. And just to clarification, I think you meant Public Safety Building, right?
I did, I did.
Yeah. And just to add, I received, and I think several of the council members received comments back from the mother of that young lady. And I think our Fire Department, Northview, and our Police Department are very, very good about helping our citizens and being part of the community. And that mother was just extremely grateful. And speaking of goodwill, Councilman Severing, those are the type of things that I think are very helpful to develop relationships. And I'm, I'm glad that our council is supportive of our public safety, that there's no discussion about some of the things that are going on in other communities. So thank you for your support there. Thanks, Councilwoman.
May I add a foot, Mayor, may I add a footnote to your comment on the Northview Fire Department? There was a situation, yeah, arise and how the paramedics and urgency responders and how impressed I was with how fast they got there and the professionalism and their concern for those involved and those around. They did a great job and it was just, they just do a great job and they're very much appreciated.
Yes, in fact, I think they saved a life that evening.
They did, they did indeed.
So kudos to them and thank you, Councilwoman Stoker, for your report. Councilman Severing, would you like to give us and the citizens an update on Public Works?
Yes, I certainly would. Dave and the staff there have been working very dutifully. I have two reports, one from July and then one from August. Let me, let me say that they have completed four large projects since the beginning of July, some of which were maybe ten, twenty, thirty percent start, finish, and then they, they were able to get these to a hundred percent. They include the crosswalk sign at thirty-one hundred north, crosswalk striping in the city. Lone Moon View bathrooms are now completed. The bathroom repairs are all completed. The policy ground booth is completed and a major milestone in seeing our sewer line project is completed, which is going to extend the life of the sewer lines for many, many, many years. Also, an update on the garbage trucks that were purchased currently, and maybe John can add maybe an update. This was from last week when I met with Dave, but they're negotiating, there's a fourteen thousand dollar lease that they're negotiating downwards with the bank, the leasing company. John, any update on that, my friend?
No, we haven't got an official response. The, our contact has given us a favorable indication, but he is waiting for his vice president to give him official yes or no answer.
Okay, excellent. Well, and I appreciate your work with Dave on that. John, will you, I, I, I failed to write this down, thinking that I was going to remember, but can you give us an update? I know Dave did give this to me and I don't remember on the, the used garbage truck, what's, what's happening on that one? I can't remember.
Hey, Councilman, I'm not sure you mentioned that the two trucks have been sold to another municipality. Did you make mention of that and I just missed it?
No, I, the two that were, okay, so the, the two that we're negotiating with on the lease are sold. Is that what you're saying, Mayor?
John, you want to confirm that? I always believe till the money's in the bank, nothing's for sure until it's for sure, but we have got the titles and we have got firm offers and, John, you want to give the final update on that? Hello, John?
Sorry, I'd like to mute myself. So Payson City is buying those. And then the, the used one, the older truck, was taken to the Peterbilt dealer so we could get better pictures and market it better there so that people can come and see it. And we're, we're optimistic that it'll be sold here soon, but it, it obviously is going to, is taking longer than the new trucks. The new trucks, in reality, I think we've, we've got them sold in about six weeks and originally, we, we had been told it would take up to twelve, so we're, we're glad that they moved quicker, but that old one is still lingering.
Thank you, John. You know what? When you said that about Payson, it, it reminded me that Dave did tell me that and I told myself I would remember, so I didn't write it down. So thank you, Mayor, Mayor, and then also for John on that. We're also working diligently. Apparently in the past, there's been some issues with follow-up from citizens' calls and repairs, et cetera. So I guess there's actually part of some software that Public Works use called iWorks. And one of the staff there, Kyle, will be inputting calls and then they will, he will also be working on following up to ensure that those who did the repairs are following up with the citizens and ensuring that we've got a really good, clear transparency on following up on on the work orders. Quickly on EDC, Economic Development Committee, Terry Becksell is the new, the new leader of the EDC. I can't think of what we call him, but we're working on a charter there to make the EDC clear on to what our future vision and responsibilities are. And no update on the senior center. Last time I talked to Zella, she said there was nothing occurring and I have not been updated since then. But I do want to also take a minute just to apologize. I think on my previous comments, I, about the, the Barker area, I think I sounded a little critical, so if I could ask the council to forgive me, I sounded a little critical and I apologize for that. Any questions for me from the council?
No, thank you, Councilman Severing, and no apology needed. I think we all have the kind of relationship that we can express our feelings without personalizing them. And we appreciate differing opinions and helps us arrive at a better conclusion and just adding a little bit more color, the, the work orders and following up with our citizens. We want to make sure that we're doing the best we can in, in giving service to our community. And with all the work orders that were coming in and all the different people that were handling those, sometimes they fell through the crack, even though intentions were really good to get the work done. So this is just a move to try to help our Public Works Department have, where we'll have one point of contact. We'll have one individual that'll be responsible for making sure we followed up with the citizen and completed our commitment. So I think that'll be a good move for Public Works. So the whole purpose was to provide better and timely service to our, our citizens. Any questions for Councilman Severing or comments? All right. Councilwoman Extrem, would you like to report on Parks and Recreation?
I love to report on Parks and Recreation. I got the fun job. So first I want to just say, I, I think, as with all of our departments, the Parks Department has done an incredible job pivoting with all of the regulations that have come due to the COVID-nineteen epidemic that we're, we're dealing with, while still providing activities and opportunities for the residents to have some little bit of normalcy. They've, they've done a great job getting things cleaned and, and really stepped up in changes of plans. I know all of them were very disappointed to not have their big event, which is Cherry Days, to, to work on, but they found lots of other things to, to do. I don't have the big report that I would work on mostly. Tiffany is actually on vacation, so I don't have a really detailed report about the use of the amphitheater, which I really would like to speak to especially, but I will have that next time. But just to, to give a brief overview of the things that we have done, of course, with North Shore, we did get to open. We were very excited. We're one of the few in the area that did actually open and were able to get social distancing. Things were marked, all of the, the signs were clearly put on, on the ground for people to follow and most people do, generally do. So that's been, been nice. We've had swim lessons. We had nine sessions of swim lessons completed. We were able to do a flick and float and an end of year stomp for people going back to school. We had the Benny's Boat Race, which was way fun and as Councilman Swanson will point out, that he still has not lost a Benny's Boat Race. So he did very well. Hopefully that will grow. So we, we didn't have a huge participation with the residents this year, but hopefully next year, as, as word spreads, we'll be able to, to do that. That was really, really fun with cardboard and duct tape boats. We did get a new mascot, Benny the Shark, for, that was furnished by Ramp. We did have a Ramp Day, a couple of them at the pool, so that's usually the only time we, we bumped up against the fifty percent capacity time where we had to actually limit people coming in. The parks haven't skipped a beat. They've been working hard in the scorching summer. They renovated the field at Okon Park and are continuing to keep it up. And of course, the Lone Moon View restrooms were done, so that kind of, we get to share with Public Works on that. We're very excited that's done. Let's see, and that's going to be open soon. Then we've got Recreation this summer, have four summer camps, including the Little Tyke Sports Camp and the Science and Arts and Crafts Camp. They've started tackle football and we're getting girls' basketball up and going. Now, and the events that we've had are the Food Truck Mondays, or Free Chick Thursdays originally at North Ogden Park, and then moving them down to coincide with Music Mondays here at the amphitheater and having Barker Park utilized for that. That's been very fun. Then, of course, the, we had in the other parks, also finishing the football field, getting the central control system and the irrigation done. And we put up a hammock park at Okon Park, which I was excited to see. When I was touring around and exploring Okon Park over, I think it was Memorial Day, I saw a group of girls having a great time hanging hammocks, but they were in the trees. So this is gonna be a much better solution, they, Tiffany was able to find some hammock poles that can be put in and are very sturdy and not too expensive, and so we've got people hanging hammocks on actual hammock poles instead of on the trees. Um, and then the Announcer Stand at the Equestrian Park, which again, we share with Public Works, but we're very excited to have that, though I'm sure the Andersons are, are excited to have that, they patiently and, and diligently work very, very hard in our Equestrian Park and um, we're really grateful for their service there, so, all right, any questions?
Thank you, Councilwoman Ekstrom, just, uh, for the public's knowledge. A couple of questions that have come up, and John has passed this on to the Parks Department. Had some comments about making sure we keep up Bicentennial Park. That we don't let that, uh, get out of control, uh, on us. Also, I had a, uh, a call today, and John's aware of this, once again, just for the public's information. We are, uh, taking responsibility for keeping the weeds out of the Monument Area. That is a city park, the plaza there, so we have clarified that. Then I just had a question asked about, uh, the, uh, Music Mondays in the park. Just to refresh her, that money comes from Ramp, we get a dollar for each citizen in our community. So that is not a matching program, that is money that comes from Ramp allocated to all cities based upon population. And so por, uh, portion of that money is used. But we do have, uh, if you would get back the answers on the citizen that answered the questions earlier, have Tiffany get back to them. Uh, be appreciative, so thank you for your report very much, thank you all.
Absolutely, and then one last thing, I think if, is, I think our events director is actually salaried, and any questions about salary or public record? So any tho, any of those can be looked up. So, um, you can look up even teachers, principals, anybody that's paid by taxpayer money is actually on our public records, so you can check and see how much anybody's earning.
Councilwoman Ekstrom, do you have an update on us on the progress of the Arts Guild?
I do not, other than, than, uh, just the, the two that we, uh, appointed that you had chosen to head the Arts Guild, I haven't, I, again, had a, a chance to talk with Tiffany about any more, uh, people actually joining that committee. So that's, um, that's all the information I have as far as that goes.
Yeah, they have actually met, and, uh, they're in the process now of interviewing the applicants, so once again, if any public is with us tonight wondering about that process, my understanding is they will start interviewing applicants um, right after the first part of September. And the committee, I think, will be initially comprised of a maximum of five additional members. So they'll, uh, they are moving along on that. And they will, once they get the committee together, they will be expanding and refining the charter on their responsibilities for arts and, and, uh, things in the, in the community, so once again, just for the knowledge of the public if they're interested, so thank you so much for your great report, appreciate it. All right, council, any questions of those members who reported this evening? Okay, being none, let's move into item number eight, which are public comments. Do we have any further comments from the public tonight? Once again, if you would state your name, address, and limit your comments to five minutes, it'd be appreciated. Appreciate it, thank you.
So we do have a comment from Julie Anderson.
All right. Julie?
Hi, good evening, Julie Anderson, nine forty east, twenty-six hundred north. Um, I just wanted to take a moment and thank the chief for doing what he's doing with that crosswalk right there on two thousand. As a substitute teacher, I drive up and down that road, I sub out at Orion quite a bit. And, um, it is a difficult ro, road to drive because it kind of winds a little bit, and it's not very well marked. And so sometimes you, you end up kinda close to the sidewalk without realizing that you're close to the sidewalk. And especially crossing there, there are a lot of kids that they dot across and all that kinda stuff, so I appreciate you putting some, something there. I just had a thought. Um, I know that's in North Ogden City, but is there any way we could ask Harrisville to help us with the cost of that? See, it's children that coming from their school in Harrisville. Just a thought that kinda crossed my mind. Um, my second comment, um, is about the senior center. Um, we have not been meeting as a committee, um, because of the coronavirus, um. But they have pretty much canceled all of their major events, the, uh, bizarre that they normally have in November. Um, that will not be happening this year. Uh, due to the fact of being able to sanitize everything 'cause it came in and, and keeping people social distancing, it was just, I decided not to do that. They do feed the seniors every day, but it's a take-home meal, they come in, grab their meal and go home. And I did talk to Zella today, and she wanted me to remind everybody about the shredding this Friday um, from nine till eleven. So, um, if you're out and about talking to people, remind them if they've got papers that need to be shredded, um, take them over there from nine to eleven. And lastly, I wanted to thank you for the announcer stand, um. It is awesome, the city did a great job on it and we appreciate it. But I did have one question that was asked of me, is any electricity been taken over to the stand? Um, we'll kinda deal with it if it's not, but, um, if there's any way we could run some electricity because we have to use timers and stuff like that, but that was just a question, they love the announcer stand, it's in a perfect place. You don't have to, uh, look into the sun and try and see what's going on, so thank you to the Public Works and the Parks of X, um, for getting that done for us, unfortunately, we weren't able to use it this year, but I know they're excited to use it next year, so thank you for that, and that's it.
Okay, Councilwoman Ekstrom, could you follow up on the electricity answer, please? John, do we have anyone else from the public?
We have Brenda Ashdown with her hand raised.
Okay, Brenda.
Brenda Ashdown, one ninety-three east Pleasant View Drive in North Ogden. Um, I'm afraid it's gonna be the same old thing. I'm not gonna mention anything about the trees, but I still don't have them. But my biggest complaint is going to be the website and trying to get information off of that, as far as the little boat race thing. There wasn't anything on the calendar for that. Um, that's just my biggest thing, there was, Mayor, you did a, a video about the tax, taxation thing. It was nowhere to be found on the website. I, you know, saw it on Facebook, but I just really, really wish that your website would be user-friendly. I do wanna thank Lynn Becksell, she has been sending me the newsletter because apparently the email addition thing on the website doesn't work, so I appreciate her doing that. That's all.
Thank you, uh, and, uh, your comments are very valid and we do need to improve our, uh, communication through the website, it is our goal to make that the um, center of, of information for our citizens. Uh, we have had discussion about making sure everything that's on the individual department's websites are on the um, city website. And we do have some work, obviously, to do there. Uh, very timely because John and myself are just finishing up his evaluation, he's looking for some goals to complete, so that'll be helpful, so thank you. Anything else, John?
Uh, no other hands or comments at this time.
All right. Let's go to comments from the council and staff. Any comments, uh, from staff before we go to the council?
So I just have one, Mayor, um, the, the final night of the Music Mondays in the park, or at the amphitheater at Barker Park, uh, is, uh, Ryan Shoup, uh, minus the Rubber Band or Banza, whichever you prefer. Uh, but that'll be this Monday, and there is also food trucks that night as well. I do not know who the opener is, but it'll start, food trucks will show up at five and music will start at five or five-thirty. And then go till eight-thirty-ish, so.
And Councilwoman Ekstrom, just for your information, um, I've challenged John to develop a strategy to work with Tiffany to get more people there. It's a little bit disheartening to, to go over and see fifty, sixty people uh, in that facility, so we need to, uh, come up with some strategies to increase attendance there. Um, so we can continue on that program. Um, it's just, you know, I just think it's, it's sad thing to have the low number of people we have there for, uh, for a community event, so just so you're aware. That's probably another goal on John's, uh, annual review, so. See, we're, we're getting that done, John, we're getting that done. Um, any other comments, John?
Nope, that's it.
Perfect. A- anything else from staff? Council, any other comments?
Mayor, one quick question.
Yes, sir, Councilman Swanson.
The, with the CARES Act, monies being allowed as it seems at this point for public safety, those crosswalk flashing signs that we're going to put in, will that, does that fall under public safety sufficiently for it to be used for that?
We'll have Evan investigate that, although I'd like to kinda hang on to that money till we get total clarity, but, uh, that's a good point, we'll look into it.
Mayor, it, it does not qualify that they, the Treasury has made it clear it's only public safety salaries and equipment, and it's equipment tied to COVID.
Okay. So John got your answer there, Councilman. All right, if there are no other, uh, comments from the council, we'll look for a, a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Of a motion by Councilwoman Stoker. Have a second? And a second by Councilwoman Ekstrom. All in favor to, uh, adjourn our meeting tonight? With thanks for all those who have participated and all you do. Uh, we'll now then end our meeting, thank you so much.
Thank you.